We're all set, okay. First order of business is the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. We need to do the minutes. Um, last meeting, the, the minutes of February twenty first, I think were incomplete in the drive. So I believe this is the complete version. If anyone has anything they would like to add, or we can make a motion to accept one or both.
I'll move to accept, uh, February twenty first.
Nate moves, I will second, Kendra seconds. Uh, any discussion? Okay. All in favor of approving the February twenty first minutes as written, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And abstentions?
It wasn't that one.
Missy, did you approve or did you abstain?
I approved.
Okay, so it's four zero one. Alright, and the minutes of March twentieth. I will second Nate and Kendra. Uh, any discussion? Okay. All in favor of approving the March twentieth mittens, minutes as written, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, five aye. Alright, we're on to public comments.
It's a bit more North Road, uh, so. You know, the last couple of years, the, uh, space issues at DCS have come up. And, uh, you know, there was the expansion that came up and was voted down. Uh, and I look at space issues in DCS in a couple of ways. The first way I look at it is, all the kids fit in the building today, right? So, it works. Are we looking at? An increase in enrollment? The past ten years have told us no, right? We see up and down fluctuations, uh, but it averages out over time. So I don't see a lot more bodies coming into the building. But at the same time, can we better utilize the space that we have? And, uh, I will tell you that. A bone of contention in the town is that shed out back, right? Um, it's just sitting there, is it being utilized as well as it could be? Could we have people in that building? Uh, I don't, I mean, I don't really know much about it, except that there's a bunch of stuff. But could we have some sort of administrators in there? If you have any sort of optics, could we have anything, could we have people in the building? And it's something I'd like to see on the agenda, I've brought it up a bunch of times, but I'd like to hear an actual discussion about it. I know I can't participate in a discussion about it. I can only talk at you, but I'd like to hear it talked about to at least answer these questions. Because I'll tell you, a couple of times a month, I hear, what do they do with that shed? That sits there, I mean, can we use it for anything else? Um, and I've certainly brought up the, my safety concerns with the trailers also. Uh, you know, can we have adults in the trailers instead of kids? So, I mean, I think we have enough space if we just utilize it better. But, I mean, if, you know, let, let's, let's, let's get rid of the mystery at least, and put it on an agenda, and get the concerns out there, and discuss the realities with the townsfolk, because people would like to know these things. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comments? Okay. Uh, gender review, any consent items?
No.
Okay.
I just have one item for, um, just to talk about graduation gowns.
Okay. Is that any consent?
Um.
Or information?
It can be consent, sure. Makes sense, why not?
Okay, a few minutes during policy intercesses, talk about policies.
You absolutely can. Um, and do we need non-public?
I do not believe so.
Okay. Great. Uh, we are on to review of correspondence. Um, I don't know if we have any.
I didn't see any in the drive. Sorry.
Maybe there's not any. Um. I know there was at least one email.
There was, I don't know, maybe it got missed. It wasn't in the correspondence folder?
There was.
I didn't, there was no correspondence folder.
Yeah, we did get one, so it must have been missed. I'll get it in there for the next term.
Okay. Um, all of you should have received it. I think I may have forwarded or added new board members onto it. Um, it was an email from Kevin Burville about. How we write our agendas, so.
Oh, yeah.
Recommended that we have. New business and continuing business, I think. Um. So if anyone had some thoughts about that, if we wanted to adopt that, or. Or not. We don't have to make a decision about that today. I, I, I think it would be fine.
Yeah, I mean, it makes sense. I mean, his, his point that he was making was to know to be here if it's something that's new.
Yeah.
I mean, it, I mean, it made sense to me.
I thought it was fine. Um, yeah. Okay, we'll change that.
Uh, I think that was the only correspondence. Um, okay. Consent agenda.
Uh, last year, conversation came up about graduation gowns, and, um, there was, there was some talk of having parents chip in, um, or purchase the gowns, or not have gowns. So that came up again this year. I just want to make sure that the board is comfortable. Um, we've had the budget frozen all year. But the gowns will need to be purchased, the order will need to go in, um, within the week, I think, within this week, right? Like immediately, and it's fifteen hundred, was that the estimate? I forget, I can't remember what it was. Oh, I think it was emailed from you.
I think there was a range.
Yeah, fifteen to sixteen hundred approximately, though, that's what they would.
Okay. And so do you need?
I just, we just wanted to bring it to the board, because there was a lot of discussion last, um, last year in the community, and having the budget frozen all year, we felt like that should be approved by you, if you wanted us to order those and spend that money.
Our parents kicking a lot, in a lot for the New York City trip.
I don't know. How much the New York City trip is for gowns?
Mind if I ask a member of the public?
On the fundraising?
Um, the estimate from the beginning of the year was seven hundred twenty-five per student. Times, I think we're at forty-nine now, because we had an addition, right? Just recently, there's forty-nine students. And the fundraising looks like we are probably about halfway. That'll probably go still, and only a few fundraisers left, like the metal truck.
Because that seems like it's a pretty hefty thing to pay for, and if we could pay for the graduation. It seems to me like, since it's a K through eighth school or pre, I mean, it's a big deal when they graduate eighth grade. So I think the gowns are a big deal.
I know there were very strong feelings that people really wanted the gowns last year, there was.
It's just really important.
Yeah.
To the families and to the kids.
I'm not opposed to it, um, but would love to hear from any other board members who feel otherwise.
Because a lot of the money, sorry, a lot of the money also goes towards the semi, I don't know where. We had zero dollars for semis. We got a donation of five hundred from the church, and then another donation of five hundred from Focus. So that's all the money behind the semis, those donations, everything else would be carried.
I'm not sure, it's been a while, um, has the school ever considered buying? Gowns that can be reused each year?
I, there was a discussion, I think, about it, but I don't know that we have the space to store them, or to have them cleaned. So I don't know if that would. If that would solve our problems. But I would love to see, like. Some sort of creative solution, like. You know, in our high school, if you, if you didn't want to buy a new gown, there was like a cash of like. Gowns that people left that they didn't want. Um, but again, I don't know where we would store all of these things, like. I used my brother's graduation gown, because just happened to have it. Um, so there are things that we can do, I just, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, that's, I don't know about the cleaning cost, but that's not, that's not a bad idea. We're talking, I mean, what, sixty-five? It's been the biggest graduation class we've had. Or maybe seventy, we had seventy one time when I was here, I don't know. That doesn't take up a lot of room.
It doesn't take much space.
Yeah. You'd probably have to buy the new tassels every year. But, um, but parents could probably pay for that too, because that's not expensive. Yeah. I like that idea of having them and trying to find a way.
Currently, we buy them and then they just go.
Well, they, they take them home. I've used mine for Halloween costumes. I use the same one for all four boys, so. Yeah, but, um. But yeah, it's not a bad idea to do that. I, I guess, I wonder if we should ask parents to, if that's, is that something they'd be upset? I mean, if we're paying for them, we could say, this is the first year we're going to keep them.
I don't know that the quality of gowns that we've typically purchased would be reusable. If that makes sense.
They're pretty slimzy.
They are, they are pretty slimzy.
So I think we would have to.
They're only like thirty dollars.
If we wanted to reuse them for any duration of time, I think we'd have to buy higher qualities, which I'm not sure we would want to do this year.
Right, maybe that's something that we do next year, we try to put it in the budget. Look for better quality gowns and change it next year, and then keep them.
And come up with a plan.
And you have to, you have to guess how many girls and how many boys, so I mean, you don't.
I think they're unisex, yeah.
Oh, I thought they were white and blue.
They were white and blue, and they could choose which one they wanted.
Oh, okay.
Oh, okay.
I think it was.
It's not the way we had it, yeah.
Okay.
Girls were white, boys were blue.
Yeah.
But.
But that changed a few years ago, they can pick the choice of what they want.
Gotcha. Um, so. Get, I, I would like to have a bigger discussion about this.
Yeah.
Um.
But we need to make a decision for this year.
But we need to make a decision for this year. So is everyone comfortable moving forward with the purchasing of them this year?
What is our current budget security?
You have to wait until nine.
That's nine weeks. Right now, your estimated, um, deficit, it's actually down a little bit, which is good. Um, so it's at two fifty-one oh seventy-one. And then, um, the revenue, though, Amber, right now is projecting about fifty-nine thousand dollar less than we thought we would get. And at the end, everything gets merged together. So your retention is two ninety, and that gets brought back into the pool every year. You have to re-vote if you're going to retain funds. So it's possible that we may not need to go to the special ed fund, which can be great. But that's where we're at right now.
So fifteen hundred doesn't seem too bad, we've got a workspace, now that we did it.
I was wondering if it's, it's possible, would there be anyone in the community be willing to donate money? Maybe when we get to the, the good ones, we could look for sponsors to donate them.
Maybe more time, yeah.
And then we could, and then we could put it.
We could put like.
No, no, I wasn't thinking that, but I was thinking on the programs, you could say.
Oh, yeah.
Gowns were donated by, you know, a list of companies that we maybe get money from to do that.
Yeah, I think that is, that's a great idea.
Well, that's funny, I just made my sixty-five hundred, but I'm not moving. Okay, anyway.
Um, okay, so is everyone comfortable moving forward with gown purchasing?
For sure.
Do you need a motion?
Please.
Okay. I will make a motion to approve the purchase of graduation gowns for. The twenty twenty-four graduation, for an amount not exceeding sixteen hundred, or can, or do we?
I would just say purchasing them.
Okay.
A second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Alright, board reports. Uh, PTO, if you would like.
Thank you. Um. So we recently had Nutrition Month, which was in March, so we did one snack for the whole school. We brought them blueberries, so I heard great feedback that their kids really loved that. Um, so this is our third year doing that for the kids, so. We got really great feedback, so I hope we can keep doing that, that's something we really enjoy. We try to get something that they don't serve in the cafeteria, so it's something that they can experience that might be different than what they normally have, so. Blueberries were kind of. On the borderline, I probably, a lot of kids eat blueberries, but it was convenient and easy to package, so. Um, we also just did our small and tall ball on Friday, and I think it was fantastic. There were so many adorable little kids with their parents all dressed up, and I think everyone had a really great time, so I'm really happy that went well, and I look forward to being able to do that in the future, too.
My daughter loved it.
We did have to limit the attendance, though, because we use the cafeteria. So we found out like the one sixteen mark is where we cut off RSVPs, and that seemed to be like a nice number of kids in there, there were still lots of room to dance, and it wasn't all crowded. So we'll see what we can do next year to make sure that everyone that wants to attend can, because I did hear there were a few kids disappointed that we weren't able to accommodate everyone. Then looking forward, we have, um, teacher appreciation meeting coming up, so we've gotten a lot of good feedback about that already. Hooz and Brewz is going to help us with our coffee cart, they're going to donate some cinnamon rolls and some coffee. Jamesina Stumpgrinding is going to make a donation to help with the lunch we do that week, so, um, we have some really great things planned for that week. Um, we also have on May tenth, the BMX Anti-Boling Assembly that Focus is helping us put on. And then, of course, on May eleventh, we have the Mother's Day plant sale. So we've crammed everything into like a week. I feel like this week is going to be more than everything for the rest of the year, but that's okay, we'll, we'll have fun doing it. So hopefully, we can see a lot of people come out and support the Mother's Day event, so.
I'll be there.
Thank you.
Alright, exec board. Ms. Shuen.
You were there too, so help me out. Um. I mean, I guess I'm just looking at the things that were more Deerfield-focused than the whole thing. Um, they hired a new payroll person, so that's Robin Page, so if you see anything from her. That's the new one. At the time, you were interviewing for the accountant, and.
We completed the interviews, we have an opposite position.
Okay, so they actually had candidates?
Yeah.
And that was good. And the only other thing I thought and chip in if I'm leaving something out was, um, the audit update. And it looks like, hopefully, by fall of twenty twenty-four, that, um, our audits will all be finished and completed. So the twenty twenty-one is supposed to be done in spring of twenty-four, twenty-one, twenty-two, spring of twenty-four, twenty-two, twenty-three, summer of twenty-four, and then the last one, fall of twenty-four.
Okay. Yeah, this was the, this was a full board meeting, so it was.
All the districts.
All the districts.
It's, it's great that the field work is done, because now all we're waiting for is reports to be written up. Um, so the, the collection of all the documents, and then them coming in and pulling different documents to audit is done, so. We're just waiting, they've been fantastic about trying to turn out our reports quickly, so that was their anticipation of when they could get the reports to us.
Did they have to hire any more personnel? There were two people we were working on last night.
Um, we've only had one person working on helping us within, other people in my office have been chipping in, and then, um, the auditing teams have been great, they've been sending teams of people regularly, um, to help us get through it, so. Yep.
So, I mean, those were the things that I thought were more Deerfield-focused.
Yeah.
Pembroke had their time after. We left, because they have some other things they need to be dealing with, so.
Yeah. Go on. Principals report.
Uh, yep, so this covers, um, March twenty-first through April seventeenth today. Um, as you know, the last board meeting was canceled, so a couple of other events happened between then and now. Um, on March twenty-first, we honored our parent educators with an appreciation breakfast. Um, staff provided the breakfast foods, we collected money, um, from the whole staff to purchase a gift of appreciation. Um, we are always obviously appreciative of our parent educators, um, and what they do for our students and staff at DCS. So we were thrilled to be able to honor them with a little, um, little plant and. Balloon, and it was very nice, the special ed, um, education department said, I'll pull up in the cafeteria. Uh, we tried to, um, clear the parent educators' place so they could come down and have a relaxing, you know, little treat, and then back to work they went. Um, March twenty-second, Friday, March twenty-second, we, uh, was our last event for Read Across America. We did a Read My Shirt Day, which has been something we've done for a couple of years now, and, um, that's been a lot of fun. We also, uh, had our March all-school meeting with our third graders hosting. March twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth, our middle school team of teachers, uh, attended the NELMS conference. NELMS, the New England League of Middle School, um, in Springfield, they came back with lots of great ideas, um, which I will share in a few minutes. Uh, we, we did a, um, professional development Wednesday, PD Wednesday, we, you know, we stay after, for the hour after school, Nancy and Ellen, I'm sure, remember that very well, and, uh, so I'll tell you about that in a minute. Um, on March twenty-seventh, we had a Maravista Information Night. As you know, our sixth graders and our seventh graders are going to Maravista this year, our sixth graders are going. Um, I think the first, I think the second week in May, they're going Monday, Tuesday, then on Wednesday, seventh grade will come and they will overlap for a, a day and a night, and then, um, so then sixth grade will go home, and seventh grade will stay for a couple of days. Um, the, the plan is that sixth grade will then go back to that, that couple, for many years, the sixth grade had the science camp where they would sleep, go for an overnight, and then when COVID hit, we stopped doing that, so we're moving back into that direction. Um, and seventh grade will not, they will take that off of their, um, their plate, and do other things at the end of the year, for next year, moving forward. Uh, due to inclement weather on Thursday the fourth, we did have to reschedule our conferences to the following Thursday, which was the eleventh. Um, on Monday, the eighth, we had an after-school eclipse-watching event, um, organized by our fifth grade team and our seventh grade teacher, Ms. Serto. We had, um, several fifth grade students who stayed after school, and lots of middle school kids. Um, some kids, the fifth graders were out in the parking, the round, uh, slide parking lot, and the middle schoolers ventured up to the field. They didn't care about snow and mud, and, they just didn't care. We had lots of families here, lots of younger siblings also stayed in glasses, we, everyone had a pair of glasses, so it was a wonderful, um, after-school event. Wednesday, the tenth, um, was when we had our, uh, teen time with the middle school, where the, uh, the teachers that went to the middle school, the NELMS conference, shared during what we called a boom session, and some ideas that they had taken back from the NELMS conference. Uh, so they presented to the whole middle school team some, uh, cool things that they would like to implement or bring back. Um, Mr. Greve talked about really digging into restoring practices, which is something that we do do here, um, but he is really looking to, um, hone in a little deeper, especially next year, and starting maybe with our sixth grade, um, and helping develop, helping them develop those, um, practices as they move up through the middle school. Um, and, uh, and a couple of teachers in, um, talked about an advisory program that they had gone to, um, one of the workshops about, and they were really excited about that, very similar to what we're already doing here, about bringing in a few more consistent elements. Uh, so we're excited to take a, dig a deeper look at all of those things that they brought back. Uh, we did have parent-teacher conferences on Thursday, the eleventh. Fourth grade held their annual biography night. Um, if you were able to come, it was a wonderful event, and on Friday, our PTO did sponsor the small and tall ball. I don't, it was the cutest thing I've ever seen in my entire, I mean, honestly, I, they, it was adorable. Yeah, I'm sure you have lots of pictures, yes. It was so cute, they were all dressed up, except I had my jeans on, so I didn't stay for long, but. Mrs. Dunbar was all dressed up. Um, on Monday, the fifteenth, uh, CRB, so I think we, do we have a CRB?
Yes.
Okay, correct. I'll do that then. Yesterday, our first graders went to the State House, they visited, um, the State House in Concord, as well as the Historical Society. Um, and over the last few weeks, administration has enjoyed classes of the week. We were including Ms. Perry's first graders, Ms. Pickman's kindergarten, and Mrs. Potter's fourth graders. Uh, just a few upcoming events, uh, tomorrow evening, Thursday evening, is Family Math Night. Uh, that is a K to five event, happening from five thirty to seven, it's always so well-attended. I'll have it in the gym, all set up, and, um, seventh grade is doing a, a fundraiser with Charles Pizza. Um, we have an all-school meeting on Friday, our second graders are hosting, uh, and then vacation week is next week. After we come back from vacation, we'll be the library book fair, we'll have our annual spring art show. Uh, Turkey Tray starts, and, uh, we're doing something a little different this year. I've met with, um, Karen Levitt from the Heritage Commission. They are going to be hosting a spaghetti dinner on that Friday of Turkey Tray. There, it's a fundraiser for the town hall, restoration of the town hall. So they are working with the Historical, um, Society as well, and, uh, so that's something we have not done. Um, Karen has been here, and a member from the Terry, from the Historical Society, came, gave them a tour of the kitchen, uh, they met Gail D'Antoni, our, 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 um, kitchen. Um, folks, and they saw where they would be, they, they have it all, they're ready to go. I think Terry's making gazillion meatballs, so. Um, so that'll be a fun night, I think, I think it'll be, you'll have a good turnout for Turkey Tray and for. And then Saturday, the fourth of May, is the Southeast District Band and Chorus Festival. Our music department will be participating in some. Yeah. And that's all I have, thank you.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Alright, Ellen, curriculum review board.
Sure. Um, I'm just willing to join in if I miss something.
Yeah, sure.
Um, the main, main thing was that they, we had a presentation of the wellness curriculum. Um, and the, this is for sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. And probably the biggest change to the curriculum was it used to be sixth grade and then seventh and eighth grade together, but now it's sixth grade curriculum, seventh grade and eighth grade, so it's been broken out. Um, they, he, uh. Russell meets with them once a week for the whole year, so that's, they have that all year. And that was actually really interesting, looking at the curriculum, a lot of the different stuff that they have. And there was conversation too about the K through five, how that's really kind of integrated within the classroom and within PE, more so, because he doesn't do those guys. And then we had a presentation about the library curriculum, which, if I got this right, she went through it really fast, there were four domains, thinking, create, share, and grow. Um, next year, she's going to be having. I think she just grades eighth grade now, but next year she'll be doing sixth, seventh, and eighth grade?
Uh, she does six, she did sixth grade last year, she's doing sixth and seventh this year, and next year she'll use sixth. So she will see preschool all the way to eighth grade, you know, through the course of a week.
Yeah, she's going to see every student every six days, so it'll be right. And so, and this is brand new. She was mentioning how she went to conferences and was talking to people about this, and nobody has it. Like competency, she had to come up with her own competency, she had to do a lot of work, and it looked like it was really well done.
And they asked her to share, which she will, because she's, uh, is a tight network, that professional network.
And that was the big thing, and then we made the decision not to have the meeting in May, mainly because we really don't have any other curriculum this year to do. And, um. But the other thing I, that came out that I thought was interesting is that Brooke, who's the technology coordinator, she's working on an AI policy. So I wrote that down, so I thought that was interesting. And next year curriculum is, uh, ELA, Language Arts.
Are we going to have Art present at one of our meetings?
Yeah, Sarah was sick, so, yeah.
Yeah, and she teaches a class at UNH. So, uh, we might be able to get Wellness, or, I don't know, actually, their reading of that.
They're reading it, and they won't be done until the, was it the first week in May?
Yeah.
Um, but Sarah should be done around the middle of May.
Yeah.
UNHNs.
The middle meeting? Yeah, she can come, yeah, I think that her classes will be done by then.
Okay.
That'll be right.
Cool.
And the other two, all three will be approved by the board?
No, you just said, well, the reading is.
They're doing the reading right now, the wellness and the library, so. They have.
It's wellness, library, and art, sorry, Nate. Wellness, library, and art need to be approved.
All this year? Mm-hmm. Yeah, so all three.
Got it.
So when will the others be?
They, they would probably be able to do it maybe June meeting, the beginning.
Oh, they would definitely, I think they're being read and finalized.
I, I didn't write down the date, but I thought it was like the week.
First of all, in May.
That's what I think, too, yeah.
But there's no meeting for the CRB after the reading part and before the presentation of the school board? So they're assuming there's no changes that are going to be made?
No, I, I think they do that, they didn't really make the changes at CRB either with Art. I think it's like the reading and they work with the person who wrote it, it didn't come back to CRB to approve it. So, I, I guess unless it's like a huge change, but none of them are huge, it's more like, uh, editing and. But they didn't come back with the Art one after they read it.
I'm asking because when I was on the CRB, uh, as a board representative, that was, the step was that the CRB approved it first, and that was the approval to then send it to the board.
That's a good point, so.
The school would have seen after it's been approved by the CRB.
I don't know, I'm, this is my first year, so I don't know, that's not what we did, so I don't really know.
I can talk to Brooke, though, about having a meeting, because I'm just remembering, music hasn't been brought forward either, have they?
No.
Yeah, so maybe music can go May first.
It, I'm not sure that we're meeting, because that's right after break, we have to talk about that later.
Oh, okay.
So we only have, we have next week when no one's here.
Got it.
And then we would not really have an agenda for the, we have to talk about that part.
Okay.
But that means it's either May fifteenth or June, there's only a couple of board meetings, so that's a lot of curriculum to.
Now to floor.
We can do two and two, we could do two and two.
That's going to take the entire board meetings.
Wellness is fairly short.
It is.
Library is, is not, is.
She had a lot, but what she was doing was she could, you should just have to change a little bit her presentation, she just pretty much showed the.
Will those all be shared with us that we can see them before the presentation?
Yeah, I think art has been shared.
Art, art would have.
Um, I, I, let me double check on the, I'm pretty sure music is all set too, so, yeah.
I don't think it's been shared though.
No, it is not.
So that's what they usually did Nate, cause that's, they would come back to CRB and then after the changes and then we would approve it. Did they come back and say, these are the changes we made, cause you wouldn't wanna go through the whole thing again? What did, what did they do?
Um, it was a ye- a year of five, I think five meetings over the course of the year approximately and the readings were happening in like, let's say, January, February and March, they started coming back with changes to the CRB. And then as the CRB met a couple of times, the CRB would say, you know, sure, these changes look good, whether, maybe they were minor changes, maybe they're bigger changes, but then.
But they pointed out the changes. They would point out the changes, I mean, you wouldn't do the whole presentation of all the curriculum again is what I mean. You would say, these are the changes that we made to it and, yeah, okay, all right.
And, and usually those changes were happening over the course of the seven year cycle anyway, I mean, at three years, as part of the seven year cycle that Chris Moutique had put together, it was, it was like here are the systemic changes, like. Like large changes if that needed to be done, but by the time it got to year seven, there wasn't any major changes that needed to be done, it was mostly funding up. But still, there was an approval step that before it went to the school board for final approval.
Okay, I'll remind you of that.
Thank you.
All right, anything else for CRB?
Okay.
NBC has not met. And I haven't gotten any emails, so, all is quiet on the NBC front. Um, okay, we will move on to immediate business, uh, first we have facilities.
Good evening. Facility updates. We've received the PPA, purchase, power purchase agreement from Barrington Power. Uh, myself and Ellen have gone through it, I need to read through it again, cause it's just a lot to take in. Uh, we're probably gonna end up, I'm gonna send it out to Clean Energy New Hampshire, who's been helping us through this part, just giving. Comments and suggestions, you're probably having a schedule of meeting with Barrington Power, just to explain. What we have highlighted in the contract, so hopefully at the next. School board meeting, I will have something to present to you guys with a lot more information.
Does Amber need to see that?
I think Amber has it, right?
Amber has it, yes, yeah. We've received the punch list from the Deerfield Fire Department. Uh, today, um, s- do you guys have a copy of?
Yes.
Punch list, okay, I'm gonna go through uh the re- the new requirements or the suggestions. Uh, gymnasium detectors, which were discussed last August. Um, I will reach out to RB Lewis for pricing for that. Uh, modular classrooms, that's another RB Lewis, RB Lewis was the installer of the. New fire alarm panel, um, I'll reach out for him and get uh pricing for that.
The modulars do have like the horn and.
They have horn strobes right now in there, but um chief just would like to do that upgrade. Um, all devices on three one have been completed and taken care of. The adjusted volumes will be done next week, RB Lewis is in to do that. I will talk to RB Lewis about like making the smoke detectors out in the hallway addressable to the closest room, get those labeled. And on a map, so if anybody's responding, police or fire department, they can actually see, this is the label, here's where you need to go. And RB Lewis will be in next week to install the last hardwired CO detector in the art room.
Chris, will there be additional costs for those items? I'm assuming you're gonna get an estimate from them for those before we do it.
Yes, I will get pricing for it, I, um, we're already in the process, we already have the pricing for the volume adjustment in the CO.
Yeah.
But anything additional.
Okay.
I'll get pricing for that.
And we have time between now and the end of the year, if he gets it done, I'm not sure how quickly he can do it, but we can have a public hearing and access trust funds for that, so.
And then RB Lewis is already scheduled to come back this summer to do the demo of everything that's not gonna be used once the new panel is finally approved.
Okay.
Um, state of New Hampshire, uh, oh, um, the chimney. We have five new bidders bidding on it, which is fantastic, we're getting um installers to do the bidding, so it'll be one. One stop shopping, they'll supply and install all the material necessary. Um, I gave them until the end of this month to get me numbers and we'll take a look at that in May as well. We have seven, five contractors bidding on the roof fan, roof exhaust fans, so that's due at the end of this month. Look at those in May as well. State of New Hampshire has a get the lead out project that they're requesting all childcare and school facilities to test, to take three samples. Send them in for testing and see how they do. Our first test, we did very well of the ten buttons that we use, um, one. The state has a limit of point five parts per billion, we have one that rated one point six parts per bi- billion, so it falls underneath the state's. Acceptable level, but that one's been taking out of service because it's an older style, it's, it's probably an original bubbler from when it opened, so. They could have used lead at that time, but it's been out of service for quite some time. I will plan on replacing that one at a later date. Um, that they're requesting three samples, the second sample just went in last week, hopefully results for that next week. And then I'll have one more sample to get done by the end of June and that'll take care of that, I don't foresee, um, we're. Taking all the samples from all the new bottle filling stations, which all came back negative in the first round. Um, and kitchen sink, in the kitchen, in the kitchen sink, in the teacher's room, all came back negative as well, so I don't foresee any problems in those areas.
Right.
Um, spring cleanup should start in the next couple of weeks. Uh, we did have lose some trees on the campus that are gonna be taken care of by April vacation, nothing major, we'll just take care of that in house.
To the outdoor classrooms, got a fact of that?
Uh. Yes, no damage, but there were some trees that fell down, fell down around them, so everything's in good shape.
Somebody's been out to inspect since we brought kids out there post storm, where is it?
Say that again?
After the storm, no kids have gone out there since somebody went and did a walk around to look at other hanging trees and widow makers.
I've gone out and I didn't see any widow makers or anything that was gonna pose a, a threat to the students going out there and using the classrooms. Getting a good response for some, I hope, which is very appreciative, I'm about to repeat, students are coming back, so that's good. And um, that's all. I have.
Thank you, thank you.
Good, fantastic, thank you very much.
Can I just ask you one question, the, the fireproof cabinet, has that been taken out?
Oh, uh, the, yes, I'm sorry, uh, the fireproof cabinet, um. The way I look at it, it's in a safe cabinet away from anybody else, um, there's no. Nothing is said that it can't be stored in a fireproof cabinet, I would just rather leave all those chemicals in one central location. Away from everybody else who doesn't belong in that closet.
So they did have some chemicals in there?
Oh, yeah, yes, that's where our primary chemical storage is for the science room.
Okay, cause well, last time I think we talked about it and I was told there weren't, there wasn't any stuff in there.
No, as long as I've been here, there's been a fireproof cabinet installed.
Oh, me too, I did all the MSDS sheets for it, so, okay, so there is stuff in there, okay.
Yep.
Great.
Very good.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Okay, item B is the special meeting. For the PARA contract. Um, I have been doing a lot of work to gather. Things for the board to consider in terms of whether or not we wanna move forward with the special meeting. Um, I tried to condense it into one um document so that you can look at all of it. Um. I hope I'm not missing things, but this is, would be the first time that sort of any of us have been involved in a special meeting, so. There's a lot of things that, that we would need to consider before we, before we head down this road. Um, I do think. In terms of timing, the board does sort of need to make decisions relatively soon. If we are trying, if we decide to move forward and wanna get this done before the start of the school year. Um, we have to have, we have to post the warrant articles two weeks before the deliberative. Then we have to host the deliberative and then we have to have the election between twenty eight and sixty days later. So. Time wise, I estimated that we would. Need to have the deliberative session before July first, if we wanted to get this done, um. Before the school year. Obviously, we also need to negotiate with the PARAs, so if we decide that we're moving forward with this, we would need to. Start negotiating and have an approved plan to put on a warrant before we can post the warrant. Um, so we can have a, a sense of when this might happen, but it's gonna be a little bit hard until we decide what, how we're moving forward. Yes.
In terms of timing, um. How does this relate to, and maybe there are no answers yet, but uh, relate to the budget year, which ends June thirtieth, but there's also the contractual year of needing school, which is in September or the end of August. Can we go until, you said August, can we go until August, until before we know, or we have to know as in hold the election prior to the end of the con- the fiscal year? So that as we begin July first, we know what the rate for PARAs is? Or can that go into August? Can we not know until, if the vote is on like, let's say, August twelfth? That seems late to me, but.
Yeah, it's, it, we, if we, when we get to that point, we may have to negotiate that this will go into effect on such and such a date. Because we would have to completely redo contracts and put everything into the system, we need to give payroll enough time to set everything up, but it, it can be done.
Okay, but as far as we know, there's no RSA that says it has to be done by June thirtieth, we have to know by June thirtieth, okay, so we can.
I don't think that came up, that it was an issue, yeah.
So, um, on this document that I sent out to everybody, there are approximate costs, I will say my approximates are high. Intentionally, um, I would rather sort of overshoot what this might cost versus undershoot and then have everyone be very disappointed. Um, so we would have to pay the poll workers, there are. Um, you know, this is a rough estimate because I don't know how many ballot clerks encounters we would specifically need. You know, I think depending on how many votes we are anticipating, we may be able to have fewer ballot clerks or more, I don't, I don't really know what the moderators will wanna do about that. Um, also, you know, ballot clerks have the option of donating their time, some of them won't take a check. Um, for the time, so again, this is a rough estimate. Um. But I sort of wanna be prepared for worst case scenario. We'd have to pay the supervisors of the checklist for being there all day, they help people with uh new registration, new voter registration. If there are issues with um their ID while voting. Um, they're integral to the process. We have to obviously print ballots, so there's a cost for printing ballots. There's also a cost for coding memory cards, which is part of the uh. Machine that you stick your, the things into, I believe. Um, our cost. Is listed here for the previous election, so I think it would roughly be the same. I don't know if coding would be more expensive because we're not splitting that part of it with the town. I don't, so I overestimated on that. Uh, absentee ballot, we would have to mail all of them out. Um, for any that are requested, obviously, we have to pay for postage for that. A voter's guide, uh, we would probably need to send some type of informational mailer to everyone about the election. What the new contract says, et cetera, sort of the information we include on the regular voter guide. Um, and then we would need to determine if we are compensating the board clerk, the school board clerk. For instance, we have in the budget, I think six hundred dollar stipend for deliberative session, so if we're doing another deliberative session, are we paying her for that? And then she would be, um, unless we decide something different, she would be the one processing all the absentee ballots and she would also have to be there all day on election day. Um, I did ask whether or not we could have Kelly, the town clerk, assist us. If we offered her a stipend to do so, which we legally can, um, obviously Kelly would have to get on board with that. Um. That might be sort of our best case scenario, cause she runs all of the elections for the town versus us who run none of them. Um, so something to think about. So there's, I think a lot of things to consider, obviously, um, sort of chief among them are. You know. How important this is to the board, what sort of message do we want to send to the community, to the PARAs? Um, about, you know, the importance of this contract to us. And um, but obviously there is a cost, so. There will also be significant board member involvement. We would have to have another deliberative session, we would have to assist with setting up the polling location and we would likely have to be present for the duration of the voting. Um, I did have a meeting with Dan Holdridge, our moderator. He had requested that we, if we can, we have the meeting or have the voting on a Saturday. Just because there are a lot of elections this year, there's the state primary, there's the general, and so a lot of our, our poll workers already are taking. Days off for those elections, so not having them have to take another day off if we do a special election. Um, he thought would be beneficial. So anyway. Thoughts, what do we, yes.
I was, it's interesting, there's one more question, the other one, then I assume that. If, if he said have it on a Saturday, then I was gonna say, is there a RSA about having it on Tuesday?
There's not, you can't have it on Sunday.
Okay, is there one about timing, does it have to be open seven to seven, could it be?
Yes, it is. It has to be twelve hours. It has to be the typical, um, whatever we would typically do for voting. And I think we probably could move the location, like we wanna do the school, we could, I don't think that's probably a good idea, cause people are used to voting at town hall. There, I talked to John Harrington, I played phone tag today, there's not a cost associated with town hall, but we would need to help volunteer to set up the space. Cause there's a lot of um tables and voting booths and things that need to get set up, so he would be appreciative of the help if we could offer that. Um. Yeah, what other questions? I may or may not have the answer.
The only special meeting I was involved in was before SB two and.
Right.
We just had a.
Another town meeting, yeah.
Another town meeting here at school, so it wasn't all the, I mean, there were probably some pre-things we had to do, but it was just, it came in that night. We voted and we left.
Yeah.
So this is very different than that.
Um, I think. It would be, I, I think it's important to, to, to hold this, um. If for no other reason, we made the case a few months ago that our PARAs are grossly underpaid for the work they do. And to, to ask them to go another year without trying to update and at least bring their. Their salary into something that's a reasonable range, um, to me seems. Uh, yeah, I would not wanna go another year that way, so I would be in favor of having this, that's a lot of work, it's one of the work that I thought I, I was, I thought I was locking into it, but I think it's important for us to. To, if, if we really believe that, that our, we value our PARAs and we, the argument we made was that. We are going to be in risk of losing PARAs that we have and certainly not enticing any more PARAs to join our, our school community here if we don't do something about the. This, so I, I don't think that's important and I'm, I'm.
And I also think it's important to remember that we have a legal obligation to provide support services to students. So if we can't retain PARAs, if we can't hire PARAs, we may fall out of compliance quickly. Um, and that would be very problematic for us if we can't, you know, maintain a student's IEP. Because we don't have the staff to do that, I think that would be very problematic. Um.
It's difficult in that I fully support the paras. I mean, they save us money in the long run. In my opinion, I think of students that are here because they have a para. If they did not have a para, would they be physically here in this school? And if they weren't, we know what the increased cost is for them to go out of district. The timeline makes me nervous, pulling it off in a reasonable amount of time. Everything that needs to happen and can we educate the community enough in that amount of time? I don't want it to backfire on them. But I, I personally support them and know they need to be supported. It's just a lot to take in that way.
Yeah, I mean, paras are a very important part of classroom. Anyone who's taught knows how important paras are. Um, and a lot of parents that have children that need paras, they know how important they are. And I agree with you totally, they're grossly underpaid. I guess my question is, how, how open are they for negotiation to come up with something that's maybe not as high? They're very open to it. Then I, I would say it's something we need to do. I hate to spend this kind of money to do it, but.
Do you want us to take a vote because the negotiations committee will need to be charged with going back to negotiate?
If, if negotiations start, can part of their negotiation happen that it doesn't, this meeting doesn't happen? Does that make sense, what I'm saying? Like if they get together and they talk about it and say, I mean, cuz I would think they would need to know what the process is for the special meeting and everything. If they said, oh.
Yeah, I mean, they've been anxious to hear.
I know, absolutely.
What we gather and what the costs are gonna be and all of that. But both parties have to agree to come forward. So if we don't get to the point where we have an agreement to present to them, it can't happen.
Yeah, I mean, I think we, we will have to sort of inherently put together an abbreviated timeline. Like, if we want to have the election by X date, negotiations will need to be finished by this school board meeting.
And then you've gotta do the fourteen-day.
Current notice and then. And if it, if it becomes a point where like, we are not going to be able to agree, then, then we can negotiate that and not go forward with the meeting. But I think if both sides are willing to negotiate in this sort of abbreviated timeframe, then we can.
Yeah, I, and I don't, unfortunately, if we can't come to agreement, it doesn't leave any time to ask for mediation or go for arbitration, any of that. That's pretty much lost with this. I think everyone knows that. I think they're very, you know, they're, they're very eager to come up with something that, that we can present, so.
Failing this um process, that would mean that the terms of implemented for this upcoming year would just be the same as last year. They would, they get a step on their.
They would not get a step. They get their longevity, but that's it.
They would get longevity. They'd pay the same salary as last year.
With increased insurance costs and, yeah. So they're gonna get paid less actually, yeah.
And if we hold a special election and still doesn't get approved, they will still be in that same spot. And I do believe, one of these RSA, RSA says you can only have one special meeting per year. So there's not a possibility of doing this multiple times, just in case there was a concern that we have a really fun time doing this.
I, I just wanna be clear and make sure this is really out there, cuz what I just heard you say, since insurance rates are going up, they will actually make less next year than what they're making now. Okay. Just wanted that to be really clearly said, okay.
And I think, you know, we as a board still need to be conscious of that we can't do electioneering for the special election. So we have to be limited in how we communicate this. Obviously, we need to tell people it's happening. We need to explain sort of the terms that are eventually agreed upon, but that's sort of where we're, where we can go. Um, obviously, the paras or whomever can advocate for whatever they would like, but.
If you come out and vote it, if we approve it, then you clearly want it to pass.
Yeah, but we just keep, like we, in terms of like if we produce something to the town or like if we're sending mailers or something, like I think we just have to be, remember like what our role is in this process.
Are we allowed to um, kinda like make a plea for people who might be the ballot, the poll workers to, for volunteers? Can we do that, or is that not?
You mean start looking for volunteers?
Yeah, just like, no, I'm just like put out, like, we're really looking for volunteers to help for this special election, to just volunteer their time rather than paying them.
Oh, oh, I see what you're saying.
I, I don't know. I'm just, I'm just throwing it out there. It's a possibility. It's twenty-five hundred dollars, so, you know, yeah.
I don't know that we can do that. I don't know what the structure is. The, the difficulty we're having is the town has always conducted the elections, so we've never done an election that we've run. So I don't know what the structure is that's set up at the town.
Well, maybe if that's something we can find, that maybe John would know that.
So yeah, so that's.
I mean, I don't think we could ask people because, because that would be like, oh, we know, you know, people would think that then we're cooking the books. But if it's, we're just put it out there for volunteers.
I've heard that uh people refuse their jacks.
I do, so I, right, so. I know the process a little cuz I volunteer as a ballot clerk often. Um, it's generally coordinated by the assistant moderator, who is Eric Gross, I think. For this, well, it is for the town, I think it is for the school too, I suppose. And I don't know that we can, I don't know if we can ask people to volunteer.
Okay.
He said, he often writes like, you are able to volunteer your time if that's how you choose. I don't know if there's some like, I don't know. And, and we're not employees, but like employment-type issue with asking people to volunteer versus getting paid.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just putting it out there that that's a possibility. I'm also thinking that the ballot and the memory cards, if you're going by the amount of what it was at the last election, there were a lot of, there were a lot of cards that had to be put, I mean, how many did we fill out? Like four?
So, we only had to pay for the school one, and I think the school was only one.
Okay, I didn't know if the fact that it might just be one question might make it cheaper.
It might be, cuz I don't think it will be double-sided.
Right, yeah.
So yes, potentially cheaper um for the ballots. Um, but I don't know, costs are always going up everywhere, so I, I don't wanna say.
This is true.
A lot of it is estimate.
Right, that's, that's why I'm saying rough, rough estimate.
Yeah, no, I, I get it.
And I also think of for the voter's guide, it would, would probably be much cheaper than that. You know, if we.
If you did like a big postcard.
Yeah, like a big postcard is cheaper than doing like a full booklet. So like, I think there are options that we can save money.
You could probably print um a QR code on the postcard too.
Oh, that's a great idea. Yeah, that's a good idea.
Okay.
Well, I guess I'm gonna make the motion.
What are we motioning for the negotiation committee?
To open negoti- green, open negotiations with the intent of having a special.
Okay, so I'll make the motion that we reopen negotiations with the intent of a special election.
I will second. Discussion. Okay, all in favor? Aye.
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 All opposed? Okay, any abstentions? Okay, by vote.
Will you?
Thank you.
Okay, now we are on to general assurances.
Yes, so each year, um, we discuss our general assurances. It became a requirement probably five or six years ago. The department that sent out general assurances and they used to just go to the superintendent. Um, but then they added um the requirement to just bring these up at a school board meeting and to ask the board chair to sign them, to acknowledge. General assurances are that we're following all the federal rules because we're accepting grant funds that are flow through the federal government, flow through the state. We have to assure that, you know, we're not discriminating against anyone, all of those um regulations that were bound by school districts. So we're required to bring it up, we're required to have Kendra sign them, and we have to put the date of the meeting that we brought these up on the general assurances, so. Um, it's pretty dense reading, if anyone's actually interested in reading it and cross-referencing the federal codes. Um, I can tell you, we've been through um, probably at least five audits during my tenure and um we've cleaned up anything that has been discovered. Once in a great while, there'll be, oh, you need a policy on X and we need to beef up a policy and we do that. But other than that, we've not, we, our findings have been very minimal, so we're in good shape. Kendra has to initial.
Yes, I do. Do you want me to do that now or?
Um, as soon as you can. I need to bring it tomorrow, but you can certainly.
Okay.
We can all stare at you while.
Yeah, right. I'll do it at some point. Um, okay, twenty-four, twenty-five school board meeting schedule.
So um Ashley did this, the meeting schedules for all of our boards and we um kept the first and third Wednesday. Certainly not set in stone if this board decides they wanna meet on different dates or times, you're welcome to do that. But if you did keep the structure the way it was, um, has been in previous years, the schedule is set for you to take a peek at. Right now, you do Thursday first and third Wednesday.
And this starts in August because we don't meet in July, is that?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, and even August, you know, sometimes, depends on what's going on. If we have staff to hire, there may or may not be a lot of business in August. Sometimes we cancel one of those two meetings, um, but we do have them on here. You know, we used to, with Deerfields, only have meeting, we had meetings once a month except during budget season. And then um the, the philosophy changed with the board of let's keep the two meetings and let's use the second meeting as a work session because we had so many projects going on. We were trying to take a full meeting to just take, tackle those things. So um that's also up for discussion. That's up to, up to whatever you wanna do and how you wanna move forward with your meetings, but.
Yeah, and there, there are, because this is based on the school year. There are other meetings this year, but on the, from the meeting schedule last year.
Yeah, we're not done with the school year.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah. I don't have to come back to August seventh.
Just to, just to clarify, cuz when I first looked at this, I was like.
Yeah, why is it August?
Why, why are all these dates wrong? And I was like, oh, this is actually the wrong year, okay. It's for next year, next school year.
Okay, does anyone have thoughts or? Okay. Um, I, my current thought about the two meetings is that I would like to try to honor the second meeting being more of a work session or like informal meeting. I don't exactly know what that would look like, but it gets a little bogged down sometimes because we'll be like, oh, well, we'll just throw some business on the agenda. Um, I think this year I would like to try to focus and have it be an actual work session.
Can, can you explain to me what a work session is? I'm, I, I don't know. So I feel like every meeting I've come to.
Yeah, there's work at every meeting. So this is the typical business agenda. It's, it's, the structure looks the same.
Yep.
Every business meeting where we'll hear the reports from all of our committees and um any, you know, policies. Those things are typically off when it's a work session. And then typically, there's only one or two agenda items, so the whole meeting would just be about one topic, so you wouldn't have all these other things on the agenda.
Might a topic.
So like if we had the engineers come back in to do a review of the presentation or whatever, or if we wanna talk about high school stuff again, or if we wanted to talk about space needs or like a big, or, I mean, I, I assume we're gonna have several about the special election if that goes forward. Which is not to say we won't work on that in the regular business meeting, but it's more time devoted to those things than.
At the time that that, the structure was adopted, there was a lot going on with trying to figure out what we were gonna do for a proposal for a, an addition or, um, so we had a lot of meetings. There was the, and, and we did upload. We're gonna talk about that at some point, but it was a lot to tackle, so we were having meetings just on that.
Okay. Yeah, so I think, you know, I think there's possibilities that our second meeting of the month may get canceled occasionally. If we aren't, if there's not like a big thing that we're working on, we would keep the business, business meeting and then we can always, you know, move the issues to the next business meeting if we needed to. I, which does lead me to May first meeting, which is our next business meeting. So, school break start, is next week. So the, the SAU office, I think, is not there.
Some people are.
Some people are.
The schools are nobody's here.
So, I'm not sure that we will have much of an agenda for May first, um, because there's not, there's no one here.
And this, these meetings are a little flip-flopped because this is typically the second meeting of the month, but because of the snowstorm, we now had to insert a business meeting here, so you wouldn't wanna have another business meeting in a week. So your second meeting in May will probably be another business meeting like we did this month, so because of the way everything's falling.
So we might want the May first for a work session meeting if we decide there's something that we need to work on.
Yeah, I mean, potentially, I mean, maybe if we figure out a potential timeline for the special election, if we, I, like, I doubt we'll even be able to meet with the paras for.
Well, that's the, isn't that right when we come back from break?
Right.
The next week's vacation and then that meeting would be Wednesday.
Right, so I doubt there's like.
Well, we might have the solar power, power um purchase agreement might be ready by then. Chris was saying he might have it for the next meeting.
Did he mean, Kristen, do you know if Chris meant he would have that agreement ready for next week?
Next week, I know.
Two weeks.
Two weeks.
Oh, but he'd be on vacation too, so, yeah.
I don't, I was thinking, well, I don't know. I don't speak for him. Okay, we can ask.
So stay tuned, May first um may be canceled and everything. The, the second meeting on the month would be the business meeting. Um, but generally, yes, that's how it works. But does anyone have any thoughts about the business meeting, the work session, et cetera, for next year?
I like the idea of keeping that way and I, I think what we could, if we have a month where we're like, well, we really don't have much work stuff to do, we can cancel that meeting.
Right.
So I like to keep it with the two meetings and not, I feel like, so often, I feel like we're not getting enough done.
Thing, and other things come up all the time.
To get rid, like it killed me that we weren't here two weeks ago.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Okay, so we've already done the fiscal year and tribal update. Is there anything else that you want?
Okay. We will cross that off.
Okay, uh, review of the current school board goals. So this is a new document probably for the new members. Which does lead me into a bigger discussion about what we wanna do for the timing of goals this year. So we created these, I think, a little late into the year because we had a lot of stuff with high school going on earlier in the year. But it is typical that the school board sets goals and then we check on those throughout the year to see where we are, see how we've been doing. I would propose that we re-evaluate our goals in like July-ish to get more on like a typical schedule. I think these were drafted in October.
Yeah, you, you used, you used to do the second meeting in June because school's typically out.
Okay.
We used to just, that's all you did, was goals. I don't know if it's the structure you wanna stick with, but you have a meeting in, you have a meeting right now scheduled for June nineteenth, so school will be out, so there shouldn't be typically a lot for a business meeting. You could use that as your goal works, goal-setting work session. And then see how much you accomplished that day and then plan on
There's a time where we even have, have goal-setting breakfast.
Yes, we did. We used to go out to breakfast and posted as, posted it as a meeting, but went to breakfast and talked through the goals and, yeah.
That would be more fun.
No offense. This is very fun. Yes, okay.
Would we have to bring the camera with us to?
No. So we can sched, keep that scheduled and use that, the work session as a school board goal-setting.
Yes.
So you wanna do that? Remember that for each of them.
When we were setting this in October, we did have the conversation about deliberately revisiting and checking it on the, I'm not sure if that's why this is still being revisited.
It is, and I have failed to put it on more agendas. Yes, right.
Yes, it does.
Um, I do think as a general premise, we should probably endeavor to put it monthly on our agendas. Just to remind ourselves of the goals.
I don't know if a lot of progress gets made on a monthly basis.
I don't think so. I don't think so, but I think having it. Is better than not. Because then it gets months and months go by and then we haven't revisited them. Um, or at least quarterly. But I don't know how, functionally, I will remember to do that, to be honest. So anyway, yes, that was our, that was our goal, which was should have been a goal. But it was not. So I just wanted to sort of bring all of these to. This group's attention, I think we have done some of them. And I think that it is, there's more work to be done on others, so. I don't know if there's anything we want to do on these goals. Um, within the next few months until we set new goals, which I imagine a lot of these will still be goals.
I can certainly recycle them.
Yeah.
Um, I would say one thing that I'm interested in is we haven't really done much on the one A, which is about.
Mm-hmm.
Presentation about regarding student achievement. I haven't done anything at all to share on that and I'm interested in that.
And we talked about the math team coming back too, to give an update on how the math curriculum was going and then get updates, um.
I know. Yep.
And we should have, we, we have IRED results too. Uh, from our new achievement testing platform that was placed STAR.
Oh.
That we could have a presentation on.
I remember having a presentation last year about test results.
Yeah.
And that was really helpful.
I'm, I'm also curious about the, uh, the climate survey that they did.
Mm-hmm.
Do you have all the test results on that?
No, not yet. Well, I mean, we have, yes, we, the surveys closed, we're looking.
Yeah, the data.
Yeah, we're looking at it, um, as an, as a, as a new team tomorrow morning to figure out when we're gonna roll it out, how we're gonna roll it out. We want to talk about it at our leadership retreat this summer with the principals, um.
I'm interested in that data, very much.
Yeah, yeah.
So do we, going forward, do we need to ask you to put these items on the agenda or is that sort of, we should just sort of make a statement like, cause I, I'm curious about one B, I would love to hear more about. About those, I think these are all on here because we're all curious to hear more on them.
We were, right, right.
So how do we get?
Functionally, I don't know, it's a good question because I could put them on the agenda, but it's really. Ms. Lively and her staff who would need to like do the legwork, so I wouldn't want to put it on an agenda if it's not possible.
I, I think as much as we can map out ahead of time, it won't get forgotten and we will have it already set on the schedule. Because budget season comes and other things happen and, and your meetings are full and then things don't get, there's no time for, for other things. So getting a schedule ahead of time is probably. And then you can get the dates out to staff that need to be here, they'll know ahead of time.
It does make good use of our work sessions, if this, if our vision, if our business meeting is full, then let's put it in a work session.
Yes, I think it would be a good time, like work sessions to have curriculum presentations.
Absolutely.
So then can we say the second meeting in May will be if you'll be visiting?
We have two.
Say we have curriculum.
We just booked two.
Curriculum. Nights for May fifteenth and two for your meeting in June, well, June fifth, and then your goals is June nineteenth, so. This year is looking full, unless you want to add more to those agendas, but those are pretty big. In addition to the, any business that you need to take out. So, set it up any way you would like.
Um, C is also an important one, and that seems like something that doesn't require a meeting to have C one, so. What I would be picturing is that before the end of the school year, there's still a couple of months to start contacting high school students and asking who would be interested in coming to do presentations in the board starting in September. Doesn't have to start now, but we can start to set it up by identifying high school students that would like to come and coordinate with Concord. And maybe there's also a conversation to come around now that needs to happen about how that's gonna work, starting with the. Although we don't really have any upperclassmen, I don't know.
There's a couple, there's some there now.
Does that require a motion or something? How do we like to make these things happen?
Excuse me.
Great question. Um, if I can reach out to the, the headmaster and the principal and ask for, I don't know. Now would be the time to identify students for next year, if we should, it's our issue freshman anyway, so if now is fine, well, it will likely, like you said, be an upperclassman.
Yeah, I mean, I think it would be helpful if we. Identify what we're looking for, are we looking for them to come, are we looking for the same student to come give updates, are we looking for different students to come?
The way it happened before was that the, uh, Concord. I don't know about COVID, but the experience we had with Concord is that they, this was maybe five years ago, pre-COVID, they would meet, there would be a couple of Concord students from Deerfield. Who would meet and work collectively collaboratively with a couple of students from Concord. Um, on creating a presentation, I'm not sure who else they worked with, I'm sure there was some admin or teachers or something. That presentation was then given to the Congress Club Board and the Deerfield students from Concord, the Congress students from Deerfield. Gave the same presentation to us, and so it was not, it was, it was fairly easy, I think, low.
Was it once a year?
It was month.
Month, oh, month, like several times, yeah, they came several times, wow.
Yeah, they came several times. So we kind of got the same updates from what was happening by school at the Concord.
Yeah, that's real nice, and I would imagine Co Brown with all the sending schools they have, they might be willing to do something like that too.
Do you want me to reach out to those two people and tell them what we're interested in?
That would be great. I think that'd be awesome.
For sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, I do think, um. Be, I, I think.
And on different, on different, I think they need to be on different times, maybe every other month. Concord one month, Co Brown the other month, you don't want them to be back to back like we did with the other thing.
Yeah. I think that, um. School boards with high schools have to have student engagement on their board.
Or maybe they don't have, yeah.
If you have a, if you have a high school.
Right, yeah, we have a student rep to the town board board got it from a high school.
I see emails about it all the time, I'm like, what?
And that's why Concord has that, and then like Nate said, it wasn't a big lift to say, well, you already did a presentation for the Concord board as the student rep, let's just. Give that to Deerfield too.
Right. Um, I don't know if Co Brown does that.
I don't know.
Cause they don't have a school, traditional school board, so I don't know.
Yeah, that's true.
Um. Uh, I have, I have failed personally about more frequent postings on town website and Facebook page. Um, if anyone has things that they would like me to post, I'm happy to, um. I just post the agenda, so. And as much as I don't want to delve back into high school quite yet. I do think, you know, maybe starting. With work sessions this later summer or fall, like I do think we need to start having a discussion about high school stuff again. Um, just because the three years will.
Oh, that will.
Yes, it will go quickly.
Timeline and an action plan would be really good to do.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't want to wait until two years have gone by, so. It's, uh, not fun. Anything else to discuss about goals currently?
So when we, we're gonna go over these again.
Yes, we'll create new goals.
Right, but we could talk more about s- some of these, cause like the one with improved communication with the town. I mean, you and I've talked a little bit about it and. I think we have to find a way to reach out and get people more involved, but I don't know if tonight's the night to come up or it'd be more to. Talk about ideas that I have been thinking about when we do this.
Yeah, typically, yeah, typically you review the current goals and you talk about whether or not it's appropriate to carry some forward or.
So wait till then. Yep. Yes. Yeah.
Promend some and then add the new ideas that you have.
Alright.
And then we try, you should try to start drafting them, at least a rough draft, because if you have those goal setting and you. Talk about things and nobody drafts anything, you walk away, that's why they don't get approved until October because there's been no action taken.
Yeah, so we will, our, I will have a personal goal to improve the goal next year. Starting in June, starting with June nineteenth. Um, okay, space needs and commute, com- committee work. Just wanted to have a discussion about general committee stuff. Uh, and specifically with space issues, because I know Patty uploaded a bunch of documents, not, maybe not Patty, maybe actually.
I did, but I went digging for a lot of stuff.
Um, put a bunch of documents in the shared drive. And that work was done by prior space needs committees.
We had, sort of had multiple phases, um, we had demographic study done years ago, um, and we shared that with the team that we, you know, we chose the Valley Brunsiger as our architect. We brought them in, they went through the whole process with the staff and revisioning and, um, started the diagrams and then we hired the company to come out and price everything out. Uh, so that work is valuable and we should be looking at it, I'm not, I've assumed that those prices are not gonna hold for, you know, I know they're not gonna hold, so if we get to the point where we. We would need to reengage and rehire people, uh, and I think our work with the Valley Brunsiger would be considered done, but we should look at the trust fund and see what we have in there. Um, I think anything we do with them, we would need to pay them from now, I mean, when we have, were engaged with them during the project, they would come and do presentations for the board. Many times and invite the community, um, but I liked your idea of maybe having them come and just kind of do a recap because we have new board members. You know, this is what we did, this is the place we got to, um, the space needs committee was very active, we met, we met frequently. Um, Chris was on it, I was on it, Kristen was on it, um, the architects came to every meeting. Two board mem- do we have two board members on the space needs or one, two, one or two, I think Jeff.
Jeff and.
Was always there. And I feel like Zach came sometimes, um, and then we had a few community members that were on it, um. The meetings need to be posted, there needs to be, um, minutes posted after the meetings, um. Somebody should sort of take the lead on that, you choose who's gonna take minutes, who's gonna organize and set up the meetings, sometimes the architect can do that if you want them to. So we, I guess we need to have a, a meeting at some point or. Like balance it with the other item to, the timeline and a plan of action. To get how you want to approach it and what you want to do to get moving.
Yeah. Yeah, I think the board needs to sort of come to a consensus of what they want. The current committee to be doing, what we want the current committee to look like, what, what are we tasking them with, because. Committees really only have the power to do things that the board. Tells them to do, right, a committee is doing things at, on behalf of the board. Um, and so the board has to sort of decide what.
What's the goal.
What's the goal, what are we trying to do with this committee, are we. You know, trying to reinvent the wheel with all this work that's already been done, are we trying to come up with another expansion project, like what are, what are we doing? So wanted to bring this for discussion, so to sort of understand.
I think that last committee, as I recall, the, the goal at the time was essentially to come up with a warrant article that was gonna be put on the, whatever it was, twenty twenty-two, you know, March four and to. To propose a project for town consideration, so there's a lot of all that work happened. But then that committee came back to the board, presented to the board, as we're talking about, and the board approved to put it on the warrant, that was the process. Like, the board decided what was gonna happen and then a lot of work was done, not during meetings, but during the meetings you're talking about.
Yeah.
That was, so I don't know, like, is that what we were, maybe that's what you're asking for, are we gonna say, do we want a warrant article for the year twenty twenty-five? Like, that's really soon, to put something together to try to put on, it's because it needs to be due by, you know, November. That's not, you have to tell them to get that done, so that's, to me, that seems unreasonable, but to start to lay the groundwork for potential twenty twenty-six might be reasonable.
Yeah.
I mean, it may be worthwhile just pulling, asking the architect to come back and talk about where we were at, I mean, they, they had a lot of bullet points on their slides about. The deficiencies that were identified in the building, some of those things have been taken care of, so they can sort of be checked off, um. And then what space we came up with, they started at, when, when that article failed, drafting new plans, and that could be at one meeting.
They did present those here.
Yeah, we had one meeting where they had scaled it back, so if we want to pick up there where we left off and say, okay, that. What was proposed is not gonna fly, there was overwhelming. Res- response from the voters that that was not gonna pass, did not pass.
But that's.
And what's next?
Right.
And what price point is there?
I, I have to, I just want to throw out there, I, I don't think that right now, anything's gonna fly, that's gonna be, you know, uh, new construction, I don't think any of that's gonna fly. So I really feel that maybe the focus of this committee should be looking at, how can we get rid of the modulars, say? And make space within our building for that. There, there've been a lot of ideas, a lot of things have been brought up that don't have to do with building in addition. And I, and, and when you say deficiencies, I, I would be interested in that, like I was looking up, I, I looked at a lot of the stuff on there and they're, they're talking about. Kindergartens having to have a hundred square feet, including storage, or fifty square feet per child, you know, and then the classrooms, and really looking at that stuff closely. I didn't see anything in there about, um, a requirement for art and music to be on the first floor, maybe that's just something I didn't look at, I don't know. But I went through the whole, um, RSA three twenty, which is the requirements for schools. So I, I think that that groundwork needs to be done, and I think maybe just to really kind of reevaluate it, I was looking at some of the notes from previous meetings and. People had good ideas, but I don't know if those were ever really looked at. And to me, that's the first step, I, I just don't see an addition flying in this community right now, I just. I feel like that's just kind of like going against what everybody's telling us.
Yes, I, I want to know, when was that? The, the meeting that you spoke of, when it was all that work done, what is the date of that?
Which meeting?
The one where you had architects and.
They came multiple, yeah, they kee- oh, the one that they came at the end?
When they scaled it down. That was the beginning of when I, my first, so it would have been like.
I think it was last summer, fall.
It was, it was right after I became a school board member.
Okay, so they came several times.
Yeah.
But the last time was.
Within the last, yeah, it's been a year.
And so, but this was all for one, this one project?
Yes.
So, so when did they start?
Right. Start the original project?
During COVID, that was twenty twenty?
Yeah, twenty, twenty twenty.
Twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. Yeah, it was, it was.
Yeah.
So it was a multi-year, you know, working a lot.
Yeah, it was a multi-year, yeah.
Okay, so I didn't know about that.
Yeah.
Alright, I wasn't understanding that was what you're talking about here on, excuse me, on the agenda.
Okay. Yeah.
And when I went, said I would be on the space needs commission, committee with Ellen, I thought it was a more simple thing of. What do we have here in the school right now, how can we improve where we use the space in the school, I wasn't aware of all of that, so.
Right. Yeah, that's what the committee looked like, but like Kendra said, you can all decide.
Right.
What, what you want to do moving forward.
Yeah, so I, I think this, at this time, that's a little foolish trying to get our architectures back, architects back in and starting doling out more money.
So.
I mean, I, I guess I don't know, Ellen, that I agree that, that nothing could ever pass because I think we hear time and time again that like, we need to hear of the modulars, we need to. Have more space.
Right, but maybe there's lower cost ways to do it than in addition to the school.
Yeah, I just, I don't, I don't really see how, I mean, there are four classrooms outside. I don't know that there's a way we can create space for four whole classrooms.
Well, is that something that we can take on first to look at, I mean, that's when.
I mean, I mean.
I thought we were doing on, that's what we like.
I think it's important to involve the administration, I think it needs to, it could start as a conversation to sort of present the. How many rooms do we have, how many teachers do we have, this is how we're utilizing our spaces, because I know Brian and Kristen. Several years in a row moved grade levels, moved people around, moved to try to figure out and navigate, um. Where we could place people, we, and the reason that we have the shed is because we have people working in closets, we have no teachers room, we have, you know, those are the reasons that we have the shed. And that it's full of stuff, because all the stuff came out of closets and out of storage areas to fit people.
And on the stairwells, yeah, that was, we can't have anything on the stairwells, that's all there.
Yeah, so I think that's, that's a great point of like starting with the basics, like how are we using this building and what's, what's in all of our spaces?
Mm-hmm.
Um, and that, maybe that start is to have Brian and Kristen go over all the spaces we have with you and let you know how they're being used right now.
Even more basic was that, that. Even more basic was that, the, the demographics work that we did a long time ago, and we had a speaker point out that that numbers are going down, but despite the amount of building going on in this town, like, I, I, I wonder, those, to me, those don't line up and, and certainly there are fewer people now, it suits now than you said, you know, years ago. But, but I, it may require a closer look, and like, if we were to actually look at that again, really, can we say with confidence that we're not gonna be getting more kids coming in with all of the buildings happening in town?
We, um, don't forget too, we are waiting on results from the commission, um, that we signed on. They identified us as one of the communities that had growing population, um, so they're still working on that, I know they reached out again for information, um, just two weeks ago, so I think they're trying to finish up and I'll be really interested at what they
That's a quality mission, right?
The what?
Southern something.
Yeah, they were, they were involved in it, yeah.
Cause I did, I looked at, um, growth from two thousand twelve to this year, and there was kind of a hump in the middle. But we are back down to, like, in two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen, it was four sixty-two, and this year we're four ninety-eight. You know, that's about what, thirty, thirty-six kids more, which is still thirty-six kids more. And I know that, um, I was really interested in the, the building in town too, cause there's a lot of building in town. And there is, I guess, a percentage that you typically use, you look at how much building and then you take a percentage, so that many more students usually come to your school.
And that's been part of, that was part of their study, is the relationship between new development and the number of students, and that is very hard to predict. I mean, there have been years when, um, there's a lot of development in Pembroke right now, and all of a sudden you get eight second graders, like, okay, families, could you, you know, couldn't we have one in this grade and one in this grade, you just never know students that are gonna, and that can, I mean, that could cause you to add another teacher, uh, whereas if they're all spread out through the grades, that doesn't impact staffing.
And I wonder also, um, like, the whole homeschool thing, how many kids are being homeschooled, seems to be a little more popular.
And more popular in this town than some other towns as well.
Exactly, right, and in the state more than other states, because, yeah, it's very pro that. Um, so I mean, those are all kind of things to look at, but I just feel like if we at least have a you, you know, maybe these are some ideas that we could make room for four classrooms out of the modulars, I mean, I'm really worried about the modulars, like, they, according to, I, I was looking at the capital investment plan. They have a lifespan of twenty-five years, that's next year, that's twenty-five years, so, you know, that's a concern.
If we, if we want to, um, we, when we started this work, a couple of times, we had the board meeting begin with a tour of the school and we went through and Brian and Kristen, like, talked about every space, walked the board, we have new board members that haven't done that yet, um, to show you, like, okay, this is a first grade classroom, okay, this is where the art class, just to get a sense of what all this, what is, what's in all the spaces, we can do that again. If, I know you've been, you guys have been here, but things have changed.
Even though I've been here, I don't know where everything is, and I've talked to people that were here, you know, twenty years ago, and they told me, like, the administrative, you know, when you first come in the door to the right, that was a classroom, I, I didn't know that was a classroom, did you know that was a classroom?
Well, yeah, I do remember there were classrooms there when we first moved in, but then they put up Bill Fowler put up walls because they needed space for.
Right, and then I wonder, what, like, what are the requirements of a modulars, twenty-five year lifespan mean that it's gonna start to fall apart? Or you can't have, you know, like, what?
No, it's, it's just an estimate of how long would we reasonably expect these things to hold up, but I think they've been very well maintained.
Yeah, cause the idea of having
Carpet's been changed, siding's been worked on, and the skirting has been worked on, and ramps, you know, handicap ramps and stairs have been replaced, so I think that would be a question for Chris, but I don't, I think they're in pretty good shape.
And I think, you know, to address some concerns brought up in public comments, like, I don't the shed, I think, is a non-starter, like, I don't think that could ever be approved as educational space.
Um, that would require DOE approval.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, never, but I don't know that we're, that we're fixing any problems by having educational space in the shed versus the modulars.
Is there even any plumbing in there?
No, well, you would have to, I mean, you might have to pay money to do that, but, but that might be, like, you might get to a point where this is the amount we're looking for to make it so we have the space, if you have to put plumbing and sink toilets in, I don't know, maybe put some windows in or something, I mean, you might be able to re, refit it. And I would think for, if you did it for preschool, they're kind of like, they just come half a day anyway.
Isn't the problem with the modulars probably the downside of the envelope of the building, or is that gonna, whatever, it's, we're getting to the
Yeah, we're getting into specifics, but I'm just saying, these are things we can look at, I was looking on the list of some of the, you know, some of the other ideas, um. You know, if music has to be, and art have to be on the first floor, what if we had the music teachers alternate taking, um, music on a cart and going to the lower grades, and then they would have music in the classrooms with the lower grades, I don't know, that's an idea, that would free up a room.
Would, um, is this an argument for having next meeting and just having a walk around? They, they kind of like make
Oh, that's a good idea.
Chris be ready to show us until these that?
Would that be okay?
Oh, Brian and I can show you, Chris is gonna be here.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that's fine, um. We can have, and then the work group is sort of like more open forum, right, like, we can have all these discussions and we can share things that it's not like quite as formal.
And that, and that will help inform the work too, if you wanna have a space, another space needs committee will do this part, talk about it, remember more, we'll have an idea of the direction you wanna go in and what you're gonna pass the committee with, right?
So that could be our goal for the next meeting, if you'd ask the committee, if anybody can figure out.
That's a great idea, so we'll have a tour and then we'll figure out what the committee
We'll tour the shed too, so you can see what that's looking like, cause it's not as big as you think it is, when you open up the doors and it's very basic and it's the stairwell is ver- is just wood, 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 you know, it's plywood, basically, it's not a, it's sturdy enough for you know, the couple of people in and out, but it is not a, it's not as big as you think it is, even though it looks huge from the outside, according to people.
Okay?
So we will do that for today. Okay, and now we're on to school garden grant application.
Yeah, trying to find it, in all my paperwork. Um, so this is one of the reasons why I was bummed that the meeting got canceled two weeks ago, because I don't know if I can do this now, this is due in two weeks, two weeks from today. And, you know, I was under the impression that I needed board approval to go through with this, and so I didn't do anything, because for me to so, so first off, I'll tell you what it is, I, I, I'll just remind you, this is, um, a grant for a school gardens grant, uh, for six thousand dollars uh, from, I forget, I don't know, it's New Hampshire Food Authorities, New Hampshire Food Authorities. And it's about, um, having, the idea of the school garden is to improve the, the food that the students get. And, um, so there's a bunch of things that have to be done within this, it requires, um, a, a summary, a, a project summary and goals, what are your goals, activities and timeline, equipment and supplies that you're gonna get, and education and student involvement, those are the four things that are required. Um, for me to go ahead with this, and honestly, I don't know if I can do this now, but I would need to talk to Chris, I would need to have access for him to talk about what are the things that he would need. I would like to talk to the kindergarten and the third grade teachers, because that's in the curriculum, uh, plants is in the curriculum. Used to also be one of the sciences, sixth, seventh, and eighth, I don't know if they do it now, I, I don't know, I always did a plant unit, but I don't know if that's in one of them, it's not really in the common core, so.
Third grade does, third grade does.
Yeah, I know third grade does, and I know kindergarten, how, what they have, um, we were pulling in, like, about eating healthy food. So that's why we had kindergarten, so it was about, um, them maybe starting the plants or helping to, to put the plants in, like, third grade learned about plants and how they grow, and they were growing them, like, you have the plant sale, right, that's from them. Um, but kindergarten was like picking it and they eat like tomatoes, or they eat the stuff from the, from the garden for the, for the good food. But, so anyway, it's just an idea, and then I would also need to talk to, uh, Gail in the cafeteria. Um, I have mentioned this to her, she was thinking originally that that would be too hard, cause it'd be in the summer when it's growing, but now that I've contacted the rec department and it sounds like they have, he'd be more than willing to make that part of the summer program where the kids come over and water the garden. That would take care of it, and I've also thought, with the six thousand dollars, if we gave like a five hundred dollar stipend to somebody who's in charge of it over the summer. You know, somebody who'd be willing to do that, come and check it and make sure that it is being watered and weeded or whatever. Um, so I don't know, I, like I said, I, I can't guarantee I can get this done in two weeks.
I mean, I guess I, my question about the whole thing is like, do we have staff who, who are interested in this project, right, like, the school board
That's why I wanted to meet with the teachers.
Yeah, I mean, the school board can make decisions, like, we can say we're gonna apply for this grant, but if, if there's not interest within the school and people who are gonna take ownership of it within the school, and, you know, obviously, the New Hampshire growing season is quite limited, most of which is sort of peak time is when we're not here.
Well, actually, peak time for vegetables, when a lot of the vegetables harvest, depending on what you pick, is end of August, September. So like tomatoes and all like that, that's really then, uh, squashes, there's a lot of, that you can have at that time. But, no, and, and you can always put in lettuce too, to have in the fall, so there's actually a lot that you can do.
Yeah, I'm just
But, but that's why, that's, I was gonna meet right away with third grade teachers, so I already know somebody, and, but then, you know, I, I just stepped back from the whole thing. So, I, I, that, you're absolutely right, you've gotta have the teachers that are willing, that are interested in doing it, I know part of the growing stuff that they use now is stuff that I had gotten a grant for before for them to start growing in their classrooms, we have a space already for a garden, so.
Yeah, I mean, I guess part of what I'm wondering is even if we don't do the grant, like, there are you know, very generous people in town who have helped us build sandboxes and, um, like, all sorts of things, like, is it possible that we can if this was a priority that people wanted to do, can we do this either way? You know what I mean, like, if this was an initiative that we really wanted to champion, like, sort of regardless of the grant, could we get, could be the community to, to help us?
What are the funds for Ellen, specifically, like, what, what is it?
Uh, so, the things that are approved are, uh, a hoop house, which is, uh, like a tunnel that extends to browsing, growing season a month, either way. Um, shovels, rakes, water cans, raised beds, wheelbarrows, gloves, seeds, fertilizer, soil, education materials that are specific to school gardens, and it does say you can directly fund a school garden staff consultant. And I know that in the past, when we reached out to the community for help, we really didn't get much, cause that was kind of looked at.
You, yeah, when we apply for grants, we really, you have to have someone take the lead in the school, and if you stipend someone, or
Yeah, I think it's gotta be a stipend, cause then somebody feels like, oh, I'm getting paid for this, you know, but I, I don't think it's gonna work otherwise. And then we had a big problem with, uh, the watering over the summer, so like, summer school, I had teachers who were, you know, part of it, so they would water it during summer school, but then August, it was, yeah, kind of barren, got pretty weedy.
Is, um, rec all summer?
Yeah.
July and August.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure, I can check with that, but I think so.
It is.
And he was very excited about it, actually, cause he, he said he'd done something with garden bots where it's like a robot that goes around and weeds or something, I don't know, I'd never heard of it before, I, I need to get myself one of those, but, um.
I mean, I would say, I mean, a lot of people feel differently, I would say, if you have time and are able to do it in the two weeks I would say the board could grant you, you know.
Is that okay with you, Kristen too, or need to reach out to people?
Is that something you think you have staff that would be willing to pursue that work?
I know, I've already, I mean, I already talked to Sam Wilson, and I know there, I think she's more than interested, and I think Matt would be too. Um, who's the other third, third grade person, who?
Kim Ma.
Okay, I don't know her, but
Cause I think we hear, we have to apply for it logistically through the school, so it is gonna require someone to take on that.
Right.
I know you're ob- obviously willing to spearhead.
Right, but, I mean, but I don't want, I wouldn't, I don't wanna be, I've got my own gardens that I can't even keep up with, so, um, but, yeah.
So we start by asking, or having you talk to people in the school and say, for a stipend of what, five hundred dollars, would you be willing to do this?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't even do that, first, I think what I'd ask is the grade levels, is this something you're interested in? Would you like it, would this money be something that would help you with the program, would you be able to weave it into your, you know, science curriculum, which I know it's in their science curriculum? But would you be interested in that, and, um, what would be the things that you would need? The, the reason I said Chris is I know it was always hard to water, the, where, the way the faucet was, it was difficult to attach it, so maybe there's something else you could do, or you know, put a hose thing that you can roll out and pull, something like that, like, that's why I was thinking about Chris. But, and then, and then put it out there, is there someone interested, that would be interested in stipend, I don't think it has to be a third grade teacher or a kindergarten teacher, somebody that's willing to you know, be like the garden keeper for the summer.
You typically put a stipend in the grant too for the, I don't know what they, if it's the grant writer stipend, uh, but they typically allow a certain percentage of the grant so that you have someone taking ownership of the project in general, that's typically an extra stipend too.
So that could be maybe one of the teachers if they're interested in, in doing that.
Yeah, I would say we could certainly, you could gauge interest.
Yeah, and now Kristen would have to take the
If there's not interest, then there's not interest, and, you know, we could always discuss it at some point next year, um.
Well, I don't know if it'll be next year, but
Sure.
I mean, if they wanna have a garden, yeah, but
Yeah, I mean, the, the grant funding aside, I think we would need some, like, someone really would need to be willing to take this on as like a multi-year thing, like, we're gonna get all this equipment and put it in, like, I think we would need some, someone here to really wanna do it.
Can you meet Joe?
Yeah, I couldn't meet him now.
Thank you.
Yeah, is there, is, is that grant document available so I can talk?
Yeah, you can just make a copy of this if you want. Or I can send, I can send you it.
Yeah, sure, okay.
I got it from Patty.
You wrote it at some point, I saw, I saw the garden and the food and
Yeah, and you know, you know, yeah.
Okay, um, policies.
Policies, so, uh, we did meet, Nancy and I filmed it, and, um, so
You go. You go.
So, um, if I leave anything out, please, please drop this. Um, and I think the general approach we're gonna take is that I think maybe we'll just check in at the, at the meetings and then assume that we're moving on to the third reading, and then we get to the third meeting, third meeting, we'll kind of have something ready to, to propose for, um, for adoption by the board. Um, and so as I go through these, I'll start with the second reading, um, there at the top, there, there's a high school assignment, we still don't have a solid, you know, draft for that, I think, correct?
Yeah, I sent, I sent the draft to Dean and I think he's just not had time to, to get back to that, and probably now that budget season's over, he might have more time.
Yeah. Alright. So that was making the first, first
I'll pay, I'll pay him on that.
Alright, thank you. So the other ones, DIA and GCG, um, are kind of, just the law's pretty straightforward, basically, and, and the NHSBA has, has language, I think we're just gonna use on that, so those are pretty straightforward, but certainly, anytime I, I sort of bring these up, feel free in all of your spare time to go check, take a look at these, and if you have opinions, you know, maybe a way to do this would be over the next, between now and the next business day, to email either Nancy or me, you know, or the two of us, and we could if there are any other thoughts from the boards before we get to the actual, sort of voting day, but I think when we get to the third reading, like, to vote, it's easier that way.
Yeah, I was gonna say, sort of the, the timeline for these, for the rest of the board, not on the policy committee, to chime in is really before the third reading, the third reading should be sort of the final draft.
They're ready to go.
Yeah.
Right.
I would say the first reading is like the introduction, the second reading is where you guys might make recommendations to change things, or bring certain things to our attention, saying, I really think that the board should look at this and see if, if we wanna do it, if we don't wanna do it, and then we bring it forward to the third.
Cool.
Alright, and so then, uh, on to the other second readings, the GBG, IMDA, um, so some of the, I have some questions actually that I emailed, so I think it's your responsibility, that's all I have to do. Um, so IMDA is a, um, it's about a couple of things, including like saying pledge allegiance, that sort of stuff, patriotic exercise, like, it's called. There's a federal requirement for Constitution Day use, so part of my question was maybe an update from the school and, and could you maybe, like, one of the questions we had, is that a requirement right now, what are, what are, when kid, when the pledge of allegiance comes on, what happens in classrooms, kind of, is that? I don't know, as much as you know, do kids all say it, or kids?
Yeah, sure, maybe the big kids don't, maybe as you get higher, but I would say solidly through sixth grade, yes.
Cause you can opt out, like, children can
Yeah, yeah, they don't have to, yes.
Um, and is there, you didn't know that there's a Constitution Day worked into, or curriculum that was worked into?
Well, cause at one, what we discovered is that we, I remember even during my teaching, it came up that it was a requirement that we had to do something um, on Constitution Day, and the thing is that it's, what did we discover, it's a state, but not a
state, but not a federal, it's a federal law, not a state law. So which we had been told it was a state law. I mean, I remember back teaching, it was like, well, the state tells us we need to, but it's a federal, but do they still do something on Constitution Day? Is it?
That I'm not a percent positive. I know we've talked about it. I've shared things over the years, but I'm not.
All right, we're looking at all the more. But it was, I think what jumped out at us was that it seemed like it was not one of the required ones, which was weird, because the idea is that it requires policies, but it's a federal law, why is it not required?
Sometimes, I mean, we're we're responsible for following federal and state laws, but there's not always a policy that tells you to follow it, so it's kind of implied. Um some of the legislation, when it passes, it will say the school board shall have a policy about X. And that's why there's required policies, because it specifically requires it. But there's tons of rules and laws that we don't policies aren't just because we're, we have to follow them.
Okay.
Cause it's a law. You don't need a policy to follow along.
Right.
Yeah. I will just make a policy that says we will follow all the laws.
And then IMG was the next one I forget a question about, and that's about animals in the classroom. And we were gonna maybe check with the nurse perhaps, and just see if there's any any particular practices that are used right now that we could maybe work in or consider when we.
So share with the nurse and then have Kristen and Brian take a look.
Yes.
And you know, there has to be like no allergies in the classroom. There's, it'd be up to date on shots and all that.
Right, it's a very long, like all of those bone marks in this policy that, yeah, so I assume all of those things are pretty possible.
Mm-hmm. Could you just grab that out of the drive, the IMG?
Mm-hmm.
And take a look and then show Nurse Patty.
Mm-hmm.
Um and then the next one, we had a question, J I C D R, which um NHSBA proposes an MOU, which is a memorandum, memorandum of understanding with the police department. This is about the sort of out of school suspension. It's not called student suspension anymore. It's a new word, it's new new title to it. It's not suspension, expulsion. Um but it's about student behavior. It's about a bunch of stuff, but um but their framing was more of like phrased or structured as an agreement with the police department, that's sort of how much information is shared and not shared and that sort of stuff. But a question would be if we were to, we can't just pass that policy because it requires negotiating and discussing the rules.
Right. Right.
So how, do you have other districts that will do that or?
We have a, an MOU with the Denver Police Department. Um we had one, believe it or not, here years ago, and then I know there were several years that Paul tried to have it signed and adopted, and it was sort of those, well, we have to legal look at it, and I think it just, it's been so long, we absolutely should have an updated
Okay.
um policy. So if you want, we can share it with the with the chief and ask him if he'd be willing to.
I'm just starting with the, uh just the version of it, and send it to me.
Review and and. Yeah. Yeah, and then, you know, it would both sides probably would want to run it by legal, um so, but we can get that ball rolling. Um reach out and just share the sample and say, hey, we really wanna get this.
Is it required or just, it's?
Uh not in a required section.
The the MOU itself isn't required, there are certain requirements of uh from law of when we can, what we can share. Yeah, with police, it's really, it's under, it's inferba, you know, what are you allowed to share? And there are very specific circumstances that allow us, it's gotta be, you know, imminent danger that we can
Yeah, I mean, I think.
release whatever we need to release um for student safety, but other than that, it's not an open.
To me, it it sounds like a good example of like it is a law, but probably not one that is easy to find necessarily right when you need it.
So I think having some sort of document that's easily accessible is probably beneficial, even if it's codified somewhere else.
We can send that to them to look at.
Um great. And the other one is all those things up at the top that are about high school stuff. Um we're basically saying that um you, if you're a school disaster, a school district that doesn't have a high school, we need to include our, in our policy language, our our receiving high schools' language.
No, I think we have to have a statement that we, that wherever we have students, they will follow the policy of that school.
Oh, okay, we have to actually.
I think, I don't think so. No, I think it's just a statement, because we don't have this school.
Okay.
Yeah, but you still, you have to have a policy. The policy is just going to reference.
Just says C code, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. All right, is that something that in your office that could be?
A little paragraph, yeah.
Yeah, something like that. Okay, probably, I think for most of those, those all seem like high school. Related.
Yeah.
And then the last one, or the two down at the bottom, about class size recommendation and B E D H, public comments. The public comment one, we is, we just approved last year. So I I was curious about why that's on there, unless there was specific requests about changes to the name or changes to the.
Yes, so there have been discussions from the public, and I think, I don't know if the board wanted to discuss it, so there was a public comment, I think last meeting or the meeting before maybe about changing the request to change public comments to five minutes, like Board of Selectmen. I still maintain that we offer six minutes of public comments and they only offer five, cause we have two public comment session sections. So I think it's just sort of coming to the board for the board, this current board to look at, and if they want to propose changes to the public comments, policy, this is the time to do it.
Okay. So is that like sufficient notice?
Yes, board members, look at that, please.
And email us if you wanna make changes.
Correct.
And we'll talk about it, but then we'll propose, but we'll bring back in two readings, after the third reading, what makes sense from our perspective, and then we can talk about it and.
Yes.
Okay. Great. Uh and then similarly, the class size recommendations, we were um I don't think that seemed like it was outdated. It was, maybe the question was more budgetary, maybe we wanna consider those changes.
Yeah, yes. So this also came up from, I think someone emailed me asking like, if we have a policy on this and why hasn't the board made any changes to this recently?
Sure.
Um so I think it's just another policy that like the board needs to look at. Potentially, we won't make changes, and I don't even think we would need to go to I I don't think we would have to vote on anything if we're not making changes, cause I don't think it's out of date. Um but if this current board wants to look at class sizes with the knowledge that budget season is coming up, this always is a discussion point during budget season. Um we should look at it. If people wanna discuss it, make changes, now is the time.
Um if if somebody wanted to dig into that a little bit more, first off, an email obviously, but also at an upcoming meeting, could we have class size information? Was it like ready to go? If we want us to dig into that, or is that, or is that worth a budget?
Get for enrollment? No, we have the document from, we just did print them during budget season, so.
Yeah, we just did it. We have the projections for next year.
Right, so if people wanted to look at that, we can talk about it. All right.
I don't know if I lost the page on mine, but it was missing a year too. I I'll email you.
It was the and I don't have downloaded it, it the J L D B A.
Yeah.
We had written down, should we change, can we change? Where would that one was about?
Uh yeah, I had that in the high school section, but.
I mean, it, I've just had.
Behavior management and.
Yeah, it was like we didn't know if we even could.
Is that a, if it's a required by law, there's probably very little you can change.
Yeah, it is, it says reading required updates needed, so it's probably old and needs.
Yeah, it either needs updating or it's, there's been a um sample policy that was revised after the date that you approved it. Could be either. It usually references, I don't know, like I didn't print out copies, but it usually references it on the bottom.
Uh I've got, I've got it here. I've got it here. It's about like disrupting classwork, behavior.
So if you're, can you scroll to the bottom?
The the use of corporal punishment is prohibited.
It is.
We have a separate policy on that, I think.
Um you should look at the date that this board approved it and then look at the date that it was updated by School Board Association, cause it it might, that might be the reason it's.
Uh revised in two thousand.
Is it a required by law?
Uh. It's a prior, prior by law.
Okay.
Maybe we don't have one?
That could be, if there isn't one in your drive, then that's, then that's why it's on there, cause you're missing a required policy.
There's one in the drive, so I spent. Oh, there were some changes in twenty fourteen, but it's not even, so it must be that we're missing it.
Yeah, I mean, we do have a separate policy on corporal punishment, so it's possible we had duplicative policies, which we may wanna look at actually in conjunction with this, if we're, if there's a policy that
Yeah, it it cross reference.
envelops multiple other policies, we should probably get rid of the other policies.
Yeah, it references four other ones.
So if we, so if he's, if we're doing that work and we're getting rid of policies, do those have to come on for a first reading so that we can?
Yes, absolutely, yes.
Yeah, yeah, J I C, J I C D, J I C D R.
Yeah, there's like a bunch. So why don't you guys look and see if those are actually like truly duplicative?
Yeah.
Or not, because it's possible they're not true, they like they might reference each other, but if they're not actually duplicative, we wouldn't wanna get rid of them.
Yeah, and we do, if there, if something is referenced and you don't have it and it's not required, we just get rid of that reference.
Okay.
Some, you know, if there was an optional policy that this board had never adopted, but it's referenced in the uh school board sample, it just means some boards may have another document that accompanies that policy. You can just remove the citation if this board is.
The other thing Nate that I had down was KB, it says like Title One plan and it, I have next to it Patty explained.
Okay, Patty, do you print all the policies?
No, so no, no, no.
What's Title One?
It's, what is, it's, I, I can tell you about Title One, but is it, which one was it again?
KB.
KB.
Title One, family and community.
Oh, okay, yeah, so that, that's a requirement of um receiving our final, our title, our Title One funds is to handle, handle, I can't talk tonight.
It's okay.
Getting late, um is to have an evening where you invite community and to give them a, um how we're gonna use the funds and um we do that every year, right? Mrs. Whitty?
I don't know if we have, I don't know if we have people in, um they, I, they might do another strategy, use something, do something.
How can we? That's part of the grant that we have to submit um in our Title One plan, so.
So tomorrow night's family math night and they do provide Title One.
That's probably, that's probably why, what they use for that then.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you. I think that answers our question.
Okay, I need to print them out, so. Anything else for the policy use?
So it sounds like maybe not our next meeting, which is gonna be the work session walkabout, but then the following meeting, we are gonna move these, the second to the third, and we will have some sort of panel proposal that will hopefully through clear off. And the first will move to third, or it's a second, and.
We're skipping steps.
And will there be, is somebody else in charge of putting additional like firsts? Who's, how do the firsts get on here? Is that?
Um Ashley.
She put it over.
Yeah, she, because she did that master spreadsheet, and my focus was getting the really old policies on here to go over and then also keeping you up to date on required by law.
So if we have comments, do we email both Nate and Nancy or just one person?
You can do both.
But we wouldn't respond to, gonna gonna get the reply other.
That's fine, I just, cause it's, yeah.
We're not creating, unofficial meeting.
Exactly, that's what I, why I was asking.
Yes, but you can send like informational, as long as you're not trying to create a discussion.
Okay.
Okay, speaking of informational, our next thing is informational items. Do we have any?
I do.
I do. Um too early to talk about graduation, so. I will say as an informational item, uh board members are invited and encouraged to attend graduation. I don't know when it is. I didn't say that last year, so I'm saying it now.
Is there a date yet? Mrs. Whitty?
I think so. Uh cause I think we had to clear it with you first, because you, we ran into that problem last year.
Right. There were, there was a conflict, but I don't think I ever done when you were.
I think it's tentative uh Thursday, June thirteenth. Don't you have a pool? That is what I have, yeah, semi on Tuesday, graduation on Thursday.
Semi on Tuesday, eleven, yeah, okay.
Mark your calendars.
I did have it in my calendar.
If you'd like to, you're right. I just didn't read them.
Okay, and we are back to public comments.
Errol Woods, Tru Street. I have to say, I was encouraged by the the discussion of um, I guess the space issues, uh how that was slowly edging its way back to sort of a strategic thought on on that. Um it it does seem like the last couple of elections have suggested to the school that the seventy percent of town that doesn't have a dog in this hunt uh is interested in going from a wonderful education to an adequate education, not one stream but the other, edging down towards one that can be afforded and is practical. And that's the kind of stuff that seems to pass along the way. Um I don't envy the job of doing that, but I think that's sort of what the message is, with an emphasis on on fiscal management. The 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 reality is, if you don't look after your investors, they're not gonna look after you. And so I was sort of interested to hear that the Title One public input or whatever quickly got reduced to a a one math session. I don't know. I I don't know anything about Title One, whether the use funds for a lot of different things, but you know, getting public engagement is is um I think it's three, it's a strategic issue, um and and getting the word out to people and telling them uh what you're doing. Speaking of which, um the Gazette, as the only publication of general circulation in Deerfield, would be happy to post any notices you might have uh with respect to the special education. It come out uh in June, the June, uh and uh I don't know, I I didn't quite follow exactly what the timing would be, but my guess is if there are plans in place for a special election, if you decide to do that, be happy to uh to to, you know, highlight it and make sure that people are aware of it. Uh likewise, with celebrating, I think there was a comment earlier about celebrating uh the achievements of your students. This will be right around graduation time, this comes out, happy to, I I invited this on a, on a number of occasions, and reiterate, happy to put celebrations of of student achievement and any other school achievements in the um in the last school year edition of the Gazette, so happy to help out on that front if I, if I can do, if I can do that.
Great, thank you.
Other public comments. Oh, I didn't even see back there, Linda.
I feel like I'm gonna be a, Linda Perry, sorry, Ranger, uh I'm gonna be a bit of a pain uh bringing my engineering stuff here, but uh you can't turn a shed into an occupable space. I mean, not just like from a snow load standpoint, we designed for much slower snow for a shed, because we don't care if it falls down, if there's stuff inside barns and sheds and garages and things like that, actually, get it in lower snow. Um if you were to change the use, I mean, the risk, we call them risk categories. If you increase the risk category from storing stuff that we don't really care about to students, which we really do care about, um the entire building would have to be brought up to modern codes. So I can tell you, I would, if you came to me and you wanted to pay me money and have me evaluate this, I would tell you, save your money, you're gonna tear that down and put up a new building. You cannot turn a shed into an occupable space. You can't even put adults in it, let alone children in it. So that's, it's just not doable. And I, please don't pay anybody to do that. I'll do it for free. I'll even seal it for free. Don't tell my boss I said that. Um you really can't, you just can't do that. Um one of the things, I'm going back, um it's one of my problems, I have this weird memory where I can remember practically where I was sitting and what I was doing when people were saying things, but right after the vote took place that we weren't gonna build um into a big addition, there was a work session. I think I was the only non-school board member that, that actually signed in and watched. It was just a talking, working session. Um there was actually a presentation by the architect uh that showed um just adding stairwells to the building and then, you know, on the outside of the building, which would address the egress issue that you guys have. One of the big safety issues is the fact that your egress, your your stairways are in the middle of the building, so to speak, and it's one of the the concerns. Um and then, of course, it creates this weird storage space issue that you have. And they came up with this idea of um putting exterior stairwells, which is done a lot of times. And they came up with this idea of um putting exterior stairwells, which is done a lot of times, like you've been in the office buildings or things like that, where, you know, they just wanna get some space, so they they put that, put stairwells on the outside of the building, uh and then you, now you have that space inside the building. That was presented at that one work session and never presented again, never discussed, um you know, and just throwing out there, they, I don't even know where that paperwork went, you know, it was, it was very fleeting. And I like the idea, you know, for instance, that you mentioned, and it's something that I've said before, if you can't have the 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 children going upstairs for music classes, you know, kindergartners aren't really like playing flute yet, so maybe a cart, you know, so I think the idea of being maybe somewhat creative too, I'm not saying that eliminate four classrooms, but, but thank you.
Thank you.
I, I wasn't paying attention to my time, I heard.
Yeah, no, that's fine. Any other public comments? Okay, uh we do not need a non-public session, are there any appointments or resignations? Excellent, so I will make a motion to adjourn. Kendra and Nate, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Have a good school vacation week, everybody.